Just a minute to kick this off the right way.
It's not long.
Is it not on?
No, no, sir.
How about that? Thank you, James Gang, all of you. I need all the help I can. To kick this off the right way here today, we have Ms. Dana Watson, who is, it used to be called JA This Town. They do their meetings, and so we have JA This Town here today. And so several months ago, I was asked, hey, will you come look and see what we're doing over here? They're taking fifth graders through there. You have local stakeholders, Sonic, Walmart, United, Street Toyota, I mean, there's a bunch of them. So each person participating in this, and I said, hey, I want to come back and I want to shake the little mayor's hand every time they're here. How many do you have? I'm thinking like four or five. They said, well, but let me make as many as I can. And so one day, we had a school that was there and we could get him to come to council and maybe let him bang the gavel. And so we would, we would like to do a recognition here today with John Moore. And before that, more formally, what you're doing over there and what you've accomplished.
He sprung this on me. He just now, this lady. And so at This Town, we have invited all of our fifth grade students in AISD, and we are currently reaching out to our local districts. They come to. And they adult for the day. So in their classroom, they apply for jobs. We have 90 jobs in our city. And they're all, what's cool about our This Town specifically, and what's cool about ours is our jobs are local. They're specific to our local economy. And so we tell our fifth graders when they come through, these jobs exist here when you graduate. Our city, and just kind of great life. And so in that partnership, Mayor Stanley just kind of came alongside us and has come to several of them. And so to see him come into our city and with no agenda, just to come and visit with our students and talk to them about what a healthy economy looks like. And they come to us. That's money on slide, Jim Coto. And so it's super cool, and it's quite traumatic when the court declines. We've had a lot of tears, but we put more money into it. So basically, This Town exists to show them what a real city looks like, a healthy city. And so they vote at our city and over. Just some basic concepts we're trying to teach them. And Mayor Stanley has partnered with us. He comes, hangs out with our mayors. And some of our kids don't know him. It's just a really cool partnership. We're very proud of it. And John killed it. Our mayors have to give some pretty long speeches throughout the day to all of their peers, just as Mayor Stanley did ours. And he did a great job, so we wanted to honor him today.
That's great. Thank you, Dana. Appreciate that. Joey, would you mind coming up here? We have. We'd like to give. And so John, if you'll go ahead and come on up. I would like to say, Mayor John Moore does have a. I may should have rethought. How old are you in memory?
I'm seventeen.
Seventeen. So I don't have as many years as I. You know, it's my pleasure here today to award you the certificate of recognition for future leader of Amarillo. Of our community. And they're plugged in. Mrs. Watson and everything that's going on over there is, everything is good right now in Amarillo. And so we just want to. If you come up on the dais, he's going to bang the gavel for the first time, and then we'll move along with our meeting. But if you guys would, would you give a very warm welcome?
Can't think of. Oh, yes, I actually do have something. I'm drawing in my art class recently to actually give to Mayor Stanley, which I have right
here.
A year or less.
That's fantastic. Do I have? Yes, I do. I love it. That's fantastic. Thank you. Let's go upstairs and let's get this. Everyone's here with Mayor Moore. Y'all come up, we're going to take a quick photo. Get right here, we're going to put you in the middle. Are we ready? Squeeze in. Okay. You sit right here in the center chair. Get right up next to that microphone.
I hereby call this meeting to order.
I've done the best so far. I think we're good. We'll go ahead and let you go back down there, and then we'll move forward.
You are welcome.
Thank you, guys, for letting us do that. Mayor John is efficient, he's a strong leader, and he's got a lot more. I think he kind of backhanded a compliment to me one time over there. About maybe now, I could have done better, but fantastic job. Thank you. Do we have Richie Brown here? Oh, he's in the back. Pastor, would you come up here? You're our indication. Would everyone please rise? We're going to do.
First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing me to parade today, and also thank you, guys, for your leadership. On behalf of Amarillo Fellowship Church, we really appreciate it. Heavenly Father, we give thanks and praise for all of your mighty works. You are loving and good and gracious. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Other people, to love and serve others the way you've loved and served us. Thank you for our city. Thank you for the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city the greatest. The way that you have loved us. Thank you for forgiving us of our failures and shortcomings and always seeing the potential in us. And we always see the potential in each citizen of our city. Thank you that Jesus rose from the dead and now reigns as king over heaven and earth. Thank you for your Holy Spirit that leads and guides our lives and empowers us to overcome every work of. A place where men and women operate in honesty and integrity. A city that, where your peace and hope wells. A city that, happy homes, that care for the. Thank you for your civil servants, our mayor and council members, who have chosen to serve this city through the leadership issue given them. Thank you for their hard work and sacrifice. May you continually bless them. Skillfully govern the people in our city. I pray for this council meeting today. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. Give them wisdom. And rewards, stability, and prosperity to our community. It's in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit that I pray all these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation. This is for all.
Our Texas flag, please.
Honor the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
Please be seated. Councilman Simpson didn't get his steps in yesterday. We're going to get three more here coming back down around. Council, if you'll join me downstairs one more time. And then we'll get on with public comment.
Just then, we can head away down. Our first one is child abuse prevention month.
Medical professionals, mental health professionals, victim advocates, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. Now, therefore, we, mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. In Amarillo, encourage all citizens and institutions to support the Bridge Children's Advocacy Center, Amarillo Area CASA, and DFPS, and other partner agencies, and encourage awareness of services for abused and neglected children in Amarillo. Appreciate you, guys.
Thank you. Yes. So actually, I have Judge Baker, who oversees one of our child protection courts. She is going to say a few words, I hope.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for supporting all of these fine organizations. I get to work with all these wonderful people. Some of us have worked together for a very long time. And they do fabulous work. And our children in care need every one of them. So support all of these organizations and just, you see some of these folks volunteering, doing what they do. You know, thank them for their service, particularly, you know, all the volunteers that work with these organizations. You know, a lot of these folks don't draw paychecks. They give in their time and every minute they're spending working with our foster children or doing something for our foster children is time away from their families, time away from their job, time away from their time off work. And so, you know, they, they really fill a huge gap in the system. So thank you all for your support, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I always tell Stanley to see you again.
Good to see you.
Clear out here a minute. Maybe a few of your board would like to come up. We're bringing Andrew, the project of priority committee proclamation, to the. City of Amarillo, Texas, city council proclamation. Whereas, the substance abuse and mental health service administration says that alcohol is the most frequently used and misused substance in the United States, especially among people who are college age and younger. And whereas, according to the 2022 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, 137.4, men people in the United States age 12 or older currently use alcohol. And whereas alcohol is the largest contributor to the leading cause of death among young people in America, alcohol misuse springs healthcare, criminal justice, substance abuse treatment systems, and alcohol misuse impacts educational and workplace productivity. And whereas, social pressure and cultural norms have contributed to excessive alcohol use, and that with common commitment and support, these and other substances used in mental health issues can be prevented. And whereas, the focus of Alcohol Awareness Month is to assist in the prevention of substance use and promote mental health through Alcohol Awareness Month, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable in what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping to prevent these problems today. Now, therefore, we, mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 Alcohol Awareness Month.
I just want to say thank you, guys, so much for your support. This year, we were able to start a victim impact panel, a live one. Before, any DWI offender would have to go to a class and watch a video. And when they were viewed watching this video, they were on their phones, they weren't paying attention at all. So we knew we had to do something different. So we brought real victims, their real stories. We made every DWI offender come in. They listened to our victims, the Sherlins, the Enrique, the Elsalades, all of these precious families. They have to hear that story about that victim's family and how they're having to live with their whole life now without their loved ones. And we make them share their arrest story and their blood alcohol content, and their shame there, but it's the good kind of shame, the kind of shame that makes you want to change your behavior. So we feel like with y'all's support, we're doing better and better. So thank you so much, we appreciate y'all.
All right, is Captain Phillips here? Anybody from Beta Sigma Phi? Whereas, Beta Sigma Phi is the world's largest Greek women service, cultural and social organization. And whereas, the badge of the organization signifies life, learning, and friendship by its Greek symbols, Beta Sigma Phi. And in pursuit of these goals, these women raise money and donate time and efforts to those in need everywhere. And whereas, multiple Beta Sigma Phi chapters this year support friend-aging fingertips. Now, therefore, we, mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2024 as Beta Sigma Phi.
I want to thank all the ones for their support. We work a lot with charities, we donate to charities, we try to volunteer our time with charities. We have two first responders today that we do. We take snacks and gifts to the police force, the sheriff's department, all of the fire stations, volunteer and otherwise, twice a year. And I am so proud of my group. We are international, so there's chapters all over the world. Of course, our chapters are getting smaller as we get older, but we're hoping that with a lot of help from the public, we will build them back up again. So we want to God bless all of you, and thank you so much for all you do.
Well, we have one more today here for kind of personal preference for the mayor and council. I know we, especially as a group of those involved in your local government, to recognize someone in an office that really supports us. So I'm going to ask Stephanie if she would come forward. This week is Professional Municipal Clerks Week, actually, is coming up, but we wanted to go ahead and recognize this, a very important role in any city government, but especially here. So the proclamation reads, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community, and whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, we, mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5 through May 11, 2024, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in Amarillo, and further extend our appreciation to our city secretary's office for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to this community. And we really appreciate the work that they do, and specifically, Stephanie Coggins is our city secretary.
We thank council for proclaiming this week for us. We're very excited. As the city secretary's office, whether it's preserving the city's official record, helping to uphold the tents of the Texas Open Meetings Act, or public information rules for Texas, or helping to safeguard our election process as the election administrator, we are very thankful to serve our community and do what we do. So very happy to be here every day. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, kick it forward or back with one of them. Okay, thank you, guys, for letting us do that. I know we put all four on one day, but we appreciate your patience and honoring those groups and everybody. We're going to move forward. I'm going to ask city secretary if anyone with staff has any announcements today. So we do not have any announcements. That'll move us forward to public comment. The city secretary, if you'd read us into that.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we are glad you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, you'll hear a warning beep letting you know you have 30 seconds to wrap up your thoughts. We do have a public hearing today. If you're here to speak on the public hearing, we would ask that you either do it during public comment or during the public hearing, but not both, in order to help us keep good records of this meeting. It's your decision at which point you would like to speak. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name, whether or not, excuse me, whether or not you live in Amarillo city limits, and then you may begin addressing council. First today is Julia Miller. Is Ms. Miller here? And on deck after Julia will be Jeff McGunigal.
Good afternoon. I was expecting Joe first, but my name is Julia Miller, and I live three minutes north of the Amarillo city boundary. Amarillo has a lot going for it. This is easier seen after leaving and coming back. It seems like the way of the cowboy is to revel in isolation, and in many ways, I relate to this. For me, I did not appreciate Amarillo's connection to the West until my path into the Southwest. This was to graduate from studying the relation of humans to these surroundings, which entails a world of natural sciences, toxins, and faults of industry and effects of. the world of natural sciences, toxins, and faults of industry and effects of noncleaning it up. Even though impactful, this was in a city that strongly values community and their connection to the desert landscape and reveling in the cultural past. From having an award-winning farmers market to a thriving industrial composting program, there are so many paths that lost truces to New Mexico, the gem of the Southwest, could teach Amarillo, Texas, the White House of a can handle. I digress. Amarillo, wake up. Why do we have such a problem with alcohol addiction, mischief, child abuse, materialism, trafficking, and division? We are focused on the distractions. Why is our city more focused on expansion and fiscal profits than focusing on where the community needs to heal? While these things are not unique, these tendencies run demographically rampant in the city bounds. We are ungrounded, unconnected, and talked for instead of to. It is so easy to become lost and alone when there are no substrates for an easy interaction outside of sharing a spiked beverage. I was so depressed growing up in this town, constantly fantasizing about escaping this surreal landscape. I was highly competitive and also highly inflamed, unable to listen to what my body was telling me, subscribing to poison and wanting to fit in still. Amarillo does have a healthy community yet kept from the rest. With all the wealth floating around this town, I don't think that the toxic truck stop design is by chance. I mean, look at walking on the sidewalk. It feels totally alien, exposed, uninvestigated, and dangerous to go on a simple walk. It takes a hyper-aware person to remain safe. This forces the person into subscriptions of a tin gym, barren land, sitting on the low after racing history, and condoning modern normalcy over a connection to the past. I love this town. I want to be here. I can choose anywhere to go. This is where grassroots run deep. Yes, there's a lot to be worked on, but isn't acknowledging the problem the first step? Grounding people through cherishing protecting in what we have, grasslands, canyons, pila lakes, flint courts, strange stories, quirky history, and all of the lost treasures of the past is what this city needs to embrace in order to engage people, grow and reach rich cultural culture and yield. Invest in what we have. Invest in meeting people out and connected. Bring people to know the resources available. Seek to protect instead of neglect. Quality over quantity. I would like to see a list of top 20 public and private water users in the city. I would like to see the city actually incentivize collaborative and sustainable programs in all departments. I would like to see true value of design within the city bounds. The gray and golden Amarillo plains are a privilege to protect as a grassland. So let's embrace, breathe, and embrace this rampant wind because, God willing, this is the steady connection that grounds and heals. Thank you.
Okay, next. Mr. McGunagle. And on deck after Mr. McGunagle will be Nathan Smith.
Jeff Gunagle McGunagle. Amarillo, Texas is my home right now. I dedicate this to the true level of my life. It's crystal clear who she is. Four weeks back, I expressed the disrespect felt from the invocation. Again, two weeks back, and today I feel disrespected. I'm beginning to see it, crystal clear for what it is. It's one way that the majority keep power, power over others. It's crystal clear. The power over the rest has been in place since the very beginning of Amarillo, and the time has come for this power to be distributed equally for the greater good of all. It's crystal clear. It's everywhere and crystal clear. The invocation reinforces it. The majority wins, although what about the all? Why does the majority win? We are all one Amarillo. Amorillo. It's crystal clear. As Gunagle, I call out all ministers, pastors, preachers, clergy, whenever, who and ever, to examine their action in performing these invocations. Ask yourselves, do they disempower the others? Is it a power-over move? Is it the thing to do for the all? It's crystal clear. Gunagle calls out the all. Start examining if there's a power-over structure here in Amarillo that keeps the minority from reaching their potential, living their true life. It's crystal clear. Calling out to look deeply. Women, educators, overall minorities, those with mental physical health conditions, the disabled, addicts, LGBTQIA, Generation Z, the sensitives, the ex-cons, criminals, those breaking the law. It's time to look within. Wake up. See who you are. You are not who you think you are. Claim them. Participate in the world. Grow up and vote. Take part in politics. Your city. And show up. Transcend the city. It's crystal clear. Calling out those in power, is Gunagle, who runs the power over structure. Who runs the power over structure? Take the courage to look within those running it and ask, am I part of this structure? Do I control others for my gain? Am I truly living out the teachings of Christ, or am I living as a Roman using religion for power? It's crystal clear. It's time we all turn to true power. As Julie just said, collaborate as a city, collaboration and consideration of all. We have a destiny, folks, to become a Texas city of excellence. To arrive at this destiny will take great courage, courage that is not there right now, the courage of a once proud yellow city. It will take the undertaking of what I call Project Yellow, Project Courage. It's crystal clear. It's crystal clear. Thank you, Jeff. Much love. Crystal. Am I clear? Jeffrey McGunagle, YouTube channel, Jeffrey McGunagle.
Appreciate you, Johnny.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Nathan Smith. And after Mr. Smith, Michael Patrick Damon.
Good afternoon, Nathan Smith. I am a citizen of this fair city. Fantastic. As always, opening with a verse, this one from Mormon Corinthians, Chapter 14, verses 34 and 35. Let your women keep silence in the churches, for it is not permitted unto them to speak, but they are commanded to be under obedience, as also saith the law. If they will learn anything, let them ask their husbands at home, for it is a shame for women to speak in the church. Now I'm here once again to call for the public to be allowed to vote on Mark Lee Dixon's Sanctuary Eggie City proposal. To my understanding, that the petition itself is nearing its climax as far as due date is concerned. I don't know if they have the signatures. If they don't, they'll just rebrand and try again. I say this because a fellow citizen brought to my attention that back in '22, on the 24th of May, there was a City Council meeting where this was going. And I'm like, back in '22? And I owe the former mayor a debt of gratitude. Never thought I'd say that, considering I'm pretty sure she had the rules of decor made because of people like me. So I've got to thank her. And I also got to respect the political play. She used legal reasoning and a conservative response as to why we shouldn't allow this city to be a sanctuary for the unborn, as they say. Clever woman. Never thought I'd be thanking her. That's how the world works. Anyway, I'd also like to thank Mr. Tom, I can't say his last name, Councilmember Tom, because he was in the documentary, and he's made sure that he will not support this proposal. So we know he's good. Awesome. Thank you. Now, Councilmember Tips has shown that he's all too happy with the plan. He is in full support. So on the council, we've got five dudes, two dudes cancel each other out. It's left to three dudes to make this decision up. And with three dudes making this decision up, it makes sure that women remain silent. There's a reason I'm calling for a public vote. This petition to make Amarillo Sanctuary City, it's been going on since '22, just replace, get the woman off the council, women, grid of hell, yeah. Get the women off the council and then speak for all the little ladies, because they can't speak for themselves. They should go ask their husbands, right? That's the take I'm giving. But we're not at the operacy. And I want to make it clear, like the other guy was making that clear, we're not supposed to be at the operacy. And the great thing about being American is we're all entitled to vote, and we have progressed over the centuries towards having more rights for more people. But now we've decided that we're going to just silence half the population on an issue that affects their bodies primarily? I don't know. That seems a little odd to me, but I'm insane. And who knows? Maybe if you give them the vote, they will vote that they themselves are incubators. I don't know. It's a gamble. But it'll get rid of these people. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you, sir.
Our last speaker signed up, Michael Patrick Damon.
That's Damron.
Damn.
D-A-M-R-O-N. Hello, Mr. Damon. Good afternoon, sir. Good to see you people here. Thank you. I have received a call from one of you. I'm not going to mention any names. And it looks promising about the East Ridge sign. East Ridge, that's the primary concern here. What's in the best interest for them, the best interest of Amarillo, Texas? The sign company that has created the sign, which I'm going to refrain from mentioning their name right now. And I look forward to getting back to work. I have four years and 10 long months involved in this sign. And I just want to produce my sign, kind of like Gerald Bull just wanted to produce his Supercannon. But that sign might kill thousands and thousands of people. So with all due respect to each and every one of you, the time is a wasting. I thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a wonderful day.
Anyone else in the City Secretary?
That concludes everyone's.
Do I have anyone else here that would like to offer a comment or address? Yes, sir. Mr. Skank, please come forward.
James Skank, City Emmets, sometimes. On the fact that business sort of, I like to stay a little closer to the consent agenda. On M, N, and O, we're doing the South Gate tiers. I think it would be interesting and allowable on the public, that y'all would consider pulling that off and discussing those things to let the citizens actually know how tiers actually work and how we're participating with the Kids, Inc. Because basically, from what I understand, this is just an infrastructure development that the city's putting in so that we can take care of some of that, if not all of that area. And then I have one concern that it goes, that tiers goes all the way to Sundown. Is Sundown in the City Limits? Quite pointless word. I don't know. It doesn't make, it's a big tiers slot that I see on there. And maybe somebody could speak to that, so people that watch and stuff. Okay, sidebar. Right across an interesting news in my news feed, there's a town, I'm not sure where Holton City Township is, but they passed a resolution that did primarily two things. The first, it declared the city of Holton to be a Second Amendment Sanctuary community where unconstitutional laws controlling firearms would not be recognized. I like that. And then, I'm not so sure that we would be in favor of this, but the township created an enforcement mechanism for this resolution in the form of voluntary community militia whose purpose is to preserve unconstitutional rights to keep and bear arms. We live in a pretty interesting city. Most people that I know have guns, have that, and have a defense idea of not only their personal property, but our city too. So I don't know if we need to form, I think there's already one sort of formed. I don't know if any, but I thought that was sort of an interesting use of what we're dealing with now with sanctuary ideas. And I did tell John before he left, I hope I didn't interrupt him, how much the job pays?
It's pretty lucrative, sir. Yeah. Do I have anyone else here that would like to offer a comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Dawson.
Noah Dawson, still living here. That's maybe a little bit far off on a six-point, I too, I took what I stated and I pulled off maybe, I don't have any problem with those items, but they are fairly complete ones, and you're going to be in AEDC role, it looks like already with the action items. So it might be helpful to pull those off. You know, myself, it took me a few reads of those items to figure out what exactly is going on. But speaking of AEDC, the main reason I'm here to speak today, I don't usually like to speak unless there's something to a conversation that I can add. And since we have AEDC stuff all over the agenda today, there's a hidden perspective to the whole debate that's been going on that has been kind of missed, and that is, I actually think there's truth to both sides of the debate. There is truth to the fact that AEDC deals, if you look at the economic literature, basically any economist will tell you they're a bad deal. You'll have situations where the value that's gotten out of it actually isn't net positive for cities. There are situations where maybe even if there is a net positive, the fact is, that company would have come to the city anyways. They're just getting an extra free check. And then, in situations where they maybe wouldn't have moved to a particular city anyways, that's not even touching on the fact that there are then second, third, fourth, nth order inefficiency, definitely losses that are caused because that company, well, there's a reason why they weren't going to come there in the first place, because they would have been more efficient being elsewhere. There's also truth to the fact that it would be bad policy to just yell and say, no, we're not going to do this anymore. And it's because hopefully you all are aware of economic theory, game theory, the Fair Least Prisoners' Tale is another classic example of it. Fact is, is if Amarillo stopped doing it, well, that just means that all the companies are going to go up in love because love is not going to stop doing it. And so it would take literally every city in the state and then in the nation to stop doing it to get there. So it's kind of a lose-lose situation either way you go about it. So fiddling around with the policies and stuff and trying to figure out, okay, what's the best way we can go about this, I think is kind of the wrong perspective to look at it from. I mean, sure, that needs to be done to minimize abuses of the system if there are any. But, you know, I've also been an outspoken critic of taxpayer-funded lobbying, but as long as it exists, my position is that what needs to happen is the city of Amarillo needs to use that to advocate at the state and federal level to get rid of these programs. That's the only way that we're going to get out of this mess. Amarillo stopping is just going to hurt our local economy, but continuing is also going to help.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to offer public comment here today? Yes, sir. If you give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Zach Biese. I live in the City Limits in Amarillo, Texas, 3819 South Aldridge. As far as this AEDC, I was trying to figure out what businesses are they helping besides these big corporations that come in? What businesses are they helping? I did my research. I looked, they did give X amount of money to three companies. One of those companies is owned by the president of Amarillo Matters. I don't feel like they should be picking winners and losers, who gets that kind of money with our tax dollars. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here today before we move on? Yes, sir. Mr. Payne, if you'll come forward.
Special opinion, in the City Limits, taking my address.
No, you get it.
So I come here today regarding to AC, and I do support, you guys are looking into this, coming into City Charter and forming it. I do hope that you guys do not neglect certain reforms that are coming up. When you guys won your election, the conversation started up like a cap on local election donations and contributions. I hope y'all can. I hope y'all can, I would entrust you guys to determine a cap for elections. That is going to be a drawn conversation over the years. And I would hope that the reforms are not minimum. I would like to see, last time I voted, there was three propositions. I'd like to hope you guys do like five. Because what we've seen over the years, people complaining about the city charter and there's a lot of things you guys can do to make certain propositions become one. Like if you're going to extend terms, which I do agree with the mayor on, I would say put term limits along with it. Because we are a growing city and sooner or later, so it would be demanding for term limits. And I would want to explore why they got rid of the two council seats that we used to have seven. And if we do bring these back, can we make these a special seat? Maybe one represents Potter, one represents Randall, or at large it's fine to start elections is on y'all's agenda. And I don't really explore full paper council for future councils, but that can be taken for the citizens to decide ultimately. And hopefully, I guess, explore reforming certain things like recall measures and probably add something to like a hunting period so it's not abused. Like if you're newly elected, one year of a petition of recall can't come against you. Maybe get reelected and six months. But these are just reforms. I hope you guys don't make a minimum. This is the opportunity to do it and also y'all, I've been with y'all and I hope y'all don't miss this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else? Public comment here today before we move forward. Appreciate everyone for speaking up and exercising that right here today. We'll close by a comment, move on to our discussion items, section eight. Do I have anything from council on item eight A, review or questions? Okay, we'll move on to item eight B. We do have Ms. Beth Duke here. Beth, if you don't mind coming forward, she's going to give us a quick Center City update.
Debbie, quick, you can set the timer if you need to.
Three minutes.
Three, oh, no, another drill. So thank you for having me this afternoon. I'm excited to tell you some things going on in Center City and to update you on what we're doing. We appreciate your support so much because you understand what we're trying to do and to re-energize our downtown. I want to tell you a couple of exciting things going on in Center City. Last month, we were privileged to host a regional design workshop with the architects from Texas Main Street. Because Center City is a Main Street city on the state and the national level, our contract gives us the ability to request design assistance from these Texas Main Street architects. And they came to Amarillo to do a regional design workshop. And we had architects, planners, we had some city staff there. We had other area Main Street managers. And the idea was to help people understand why it's so important to save our historic buildings and also ways that they can help revive our downtown. They took a big tour of the entire Santa Fe Depot district. And then the Potter County Commission allowed us to have our workshop in the historic Santa Fe Building Auditorium. So it was a great day and great, just one more way, Center City is really trying to put us on the map for Texas Main Street and National Main Street. Also, Center City, if you've been looking up at the banners this month, we launched our senior banner program. We started this in 2020 when graduates could not have the traditional graduation ceremonies. It's been so popular that we've continued it. And I want you to know it's open to any graduate, college or high school, private school, homeschool. We even have some area schools that participate in that. And then, of course, once those banners come down, they belong to the families and they're theirs to keep. I think it'd make a great decoration for our dorm room. It would have been nice, mine. Then starting next Monday, you're going to see the sign around. I think you may have already seen some of our billboards, our digital boards that have been up around the city. And we are doing a promotion called Dine Downtown. I don't know if you realize, but we have almost thirty locally owned restaurants within one square mile in our downtown dining district. And we're one of the largest downtown dining districts in the state. And we want people to get back in the habit of coming downtown to eat before they go to Hotch Town, before they go to Symphony or Ballet or Concert, whatever, they're coming downtown. And then we also know that after pandemic, our office buildings are filling up again. People are working more in the office and not so much working from home. And we want the lunch crowd to come back. So you're going to see this sign on the windows of several of our great locally owned restaurants. And they are participating by having specials, special menus and all kinds of things. So we have a full list. Eighteen eighty-seven at Embassy Suites, Crush, Ebby's in Plaza Two, Lit, Nomad Napolitana, OHMS Pan Hamblers, Roast and Toast, which is the coffee shop inside the First Bank Tower, Scratchman Bakery, Six Car Pub, which just reopened, Tuscana at the Barfield, Yolo's and Youngbloods. And we also were honored last month when the National Main Street came and did a podcast and a video about our own Scratchman Bakery right there on our part of Historic Route sixty-six. So we're really trying to promote these local entrepreneurs. Some of them are the hardest working people in rock and roll. And when I travel, I want to eat where the locals eat. And I think you do too. So if you can encourage that and just support some of these local restaurants. So we will end with another fun tradition we have with Texas Main Street. Texas Main Street operates a website called Downtown TX. And if you go to Downtown TX and search for Amarillo, you'll see all the historic properties in our downtown. Some are for sale, some are for lease, some have been restored, like the Barfield. But in conjunction with this website, we do a downtown historic tour. And in the past, we've done it on Sunday afternoon and made it like an open house after church. But this year, we're doing it Saturday morning, May fourth, at nine thirty. And we're going to start at the Historic Paramount Theater. And we have special permission from the owner to go back into the back of the theater that used to be a theater and start our tour there and let people really see inside this historic building. The other buildings that will be open to us are the Levine's Building across the street, the Crest Building, which is currently for sale. And then we'll end up at the Woolworth Building where a new business, the Forty-five Wine and Whiskey Bar and Grill is going to go in. So I think it'll be a fun morning downtown. It's free. We just want to promote National Historic Preservation Month and show people that just like the Barfield, a lot of these buildings that we've watched empty for a long time can have a new life. So I want you to know too, we're partnering with other city departments. The Amarillo Public Library did a beautiful job in March called March is for Murals. And they produced a beautiful brochure about our downtown murals. We asked them for permission to reprint that. And we're going to be putting that in hotels and the travel information centers and the visitor information centers to spread the word and give the library credit for a great job. Also, this Friday, I hope it's on your calendar, the Parks and Recreation Department is going to have Arbor Day tree planting with the children from Saint Mary's Cathedral School there at Elwood Park. And Elwood Park is one of our oldest, most historic parks. If you look real close, you'll see the historic monument where Roosevelt gave his presidential address when he came to the city. So the Pope Street streetscape is continuing. I think they're about to Seventh Avenue right now. And this is going to make your Pope Street totally ADA compliant and walkable from tenth to second. And the pedestrian lights are going up and particularly in the area around Second Avenue and Third Avenue, it's really making a difference in the walkability and the safety in the evenings. So Center City, you know, we're nonprofit. We had our annual mural run, March twenty-third. About three hundred participants. It's kid friendly, pet friendly. And I'll tell you, for those of you who remember the old Center City block parties, it's a lot more fun to clean up downtown at two PM than two AM. I'll just let you think about it. The other thing that I want to tell you is that our board of directors has voted to take a pause on Amarillo Community Market this summer. I've talked to many of the vendors. Last year, we had a lot of challenges. Maybe it's a sign from God that I opened it the weekend of the flood. But heat, the drought really hurt our producers and we lost quite a few vendors. So we are still going to have our patriotic pet parade on June twenty-ninth. But we're going to take a pause on Community Market and probably hope to revisit that in the future. Hunting on the Square starts the first Wednesday in June. This will be our thirtieth season. And we're very proud to kick that off every Wednesday in June, July, except for Juneteenth because the county will be closed. And then the exciting news for me is that every quarter, Center City reports our reinvestment figures to Texas Main Street. And for the first quarter of 2024, our total reinvestment, this is public, private and public, private partnerships, was five million, four hundred and two thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. And that's all because of your support and the support of our stakeholders who know we're just keep trying to make downtown better. Thank you for a quick update.
Thank you. Ms. Beth, we appreciate you. Some of the best restaurants in the city. You making everybody in the room hungry?
Well, you know, we travel, we eat, we shop. So I'm hoping that that stays here in downtown.
Appreciate what you do. Moving on to item eight C, I think we're going to have Ms. Stephanie Coggins come up here and walk us into the charter amendment election process. You can lay out for us kind of what our timeframe looks like, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. So we talked about this at the last meeting. Now we're in business. So we received consensus from council at our last meeting that we do want to move forward with this process. So today, we brought back a potential plan to look at. So we'd like to discuss that draft plan with you. We've also asked for you to provide names for possible citizens to serve on a citizen review date. So we'll go through that a little bit and then appoint it to remember council subcommittee for this process. There are a document up on your dais that looks like this. And it's one that we've sent to you. It's a draft plan. In essence, and I'm going to go to this next slide that's a little easier for the audience to see, we'll talk about this in three phases. The first phase will be for council to appoint members to the committee and to establish your priority topics that you'd like this committee to dive into, related to the charter. Phase two, the committee will review those topics and they will present recommendations to city council based on their review process. And then phase three, you'll review their recommendations and then the council will decide what you might want to put forward to a charter amendment election and then call that election. And so Mayor, I would ask for your guidance here. Do y'all want to go through some of these dates and kind of see if this works for you? Do you want me to read through some of them?
No, I think the way you've outlined it's really good unless council sees an issue. Basically, what we're getting to is a first reading July twenty-third, a second reading in August, which gets us in front of the deadline for the November election. And so we would be pushing hard here in May to make sure that our committee and subcommittee members would be able to work through everything on their side, bring it back to council in June with the ability to review, discuss this. I don't see on here a potential consultant. Will we have a consultant? Do you think to walk us through that?
We can. And that's one of the questions that we have for you today. Do you want a consultant to lead that committee? And if so, and I know, I think I might invite Floyd up to to talk to that a little bit. I think we may have that consultant available.
If we don't have a consultant, you're going to rely on the two council members to probably somewhat navigate that until you have the chair selected. And then you'd be relying totally on the chair. So I would probably depend a lot on who we would have on that committee.
So I agree, Mayor. However, for time situation, we might just go ahead and procure a consultant such that they're available if needed. And I think rather than lead, lead guide, maybe instead of leading it, we let, we just have them as a guide, a consultant in how the process works and the outcome.
I know I would be in favor of having a consultant work through that process. Don't necessarily have to have them here. You know, I think with Zoom, that would be something that would be easier as far as schedules. Yeah, you're looking at probably four meetings over a month period of time.
We are. We're looking at meetings over June. So in essence, would we come back on potentially May fourteenth? Or we may need a special work session for this. I think May fourteenth is going to be a pretty packed day for council. So we need a meeting there where we would discuss, get those members appointed. And then we would have their first meeting kickoff on the thirtieth. And then for four or five weeks straight, they're going to meet every Thursday if that's the day we land on. And they would meet for about an hour and a half and then have a little homework in between where staff has done research and provided them. And Brian, remind me from last time if I speak wrong, but staff will go research these topics and bring back, here's what other cities do. Once we get some feedback from that committee at a weekly meeting, for example, then City Attorney's Office, it would go and draft, here's what that change would look like on the charter. Here's how the language would look current and amended. And so they'll go through all that. So it'll be a very fast and furious four to five weeks for that committee looking at the month of June. It would come back as a recommendation to council on July ninth, which is the meeting before July twenty-third, or November twenty-third, your recommendation. So it'd give you a couple of weeks to think about it and come back. And if we need to push all of that forward a week, we could potentially start with that committee on week on third. We give a little extra time there.
Okay. Let me ask council if council wants to give anything on a consultant to help navigate this or if you think we're going to move forward without one.
I believe it'd be better to have someone.
Someone, okay. Anyone else want to comment on that?
I agree.
Okay, so we would give direction to staff. Go ahead and find a consultant. It'd be good to walk us through that. I think you've outlined it very well. I think we have enough time. I don't think we have time to waste, but I think with the goal of what we're trying to do and four, maybe five good charter amendments that we would look to put on this, this is a great starting point. So from here, let me ask if council has any questions for the city secretary of the way in which she's mapped this out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because I do think that fourteen could be a challenge. One question, I don't know what the next topic is, but my question would be, obviously, council will have some things that we want, we'd like for them to look at. In general, our charter commission's free if just as a group, they say, hey, this is something. Are they buying by just looking at what we talk about? Or could they look at anything in the charter if they begin to look at this?
They could look at anything if they wanted to. And typically, the way you would see that and the way we did in 2020 is that council is subcommittee, let them know, hey, if there are things here that you think we should talk about, bring them up and then let's look at those. So they can look at anything, anything within the front and back cover of that charter.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, council? So also, I think staff will bring some items that you guys are familiar with. So we want to hear from staff, what you guys have seen and still have concerns with or would see benefits of. And then I think moving forward, the only other thing would be that Thursday is a great option. But then I think we give the names, we select the committee, check availability. Would hate to miss out on one or two just because of the scheduling conflict, so.
Absolutely. And this is what we proposed. We can also, if you've got committee members able to meet before five, we can do a drink and work day. We can figure that out with the committee members. That's going to be that.
So I know you asked for everyone to send you a list of names. So I know you asked for everyone to send you a list of names, and one Council member, we won't name who he was, did give you three names, and the others did not.
I wasn't doing my steps yesterday.
So that name is in front of you, Council. And the ones that Councilmember Simpson recommended are Gary Pittner, Brian Heinrich, and Frida Powell.
So let's start with Councilman Simpson and just kind of let him take it from here on, you know, where is that on the three? If he wants to contribute anymore, and then let's just go four to one, and we'll lay out the other names that we've brought.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I did submit three names for consideration. Gary Pittner could probably be a consultant on this. He was a longtime head of the Panhandle Regional Planning Commission. So his job for decades was supporting local government, mainly government smaller than Amarillo. But under Gary's leadership of that organization, he's tutored those who are now city managers in Midland, Grand Prairie, other places. Probably has forgotten more about local government than most people know. So I think he would bring an expertise to this area from his time really being involved in local government at all level across the state. He's seen a lot of things. Gary Pittner was someone that I wanted to nominate and has agreed to serve if asked. Brian Heinrich is a local attorney who has served the community in various ways, both civic and charitable organizations. Not recently, but before, he's been a member of the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation. He's been President of the Amarillo Bar Association and also President of Panhandle Trial Lawyers Association. I think he also was Chairman of the Board of the San Mary School. So has civic and community involvement with Brian. And then also, I nominated Frida Powell, I think we all know, who has had many years of service, even more border service on City Council. And obviously, is familiar with local government and the City Council. And so I felt like her knowledge and expertise would make her someone that could be qualified to be considered. And then all three of these have been asked and would be willing to serve if Council decides to go in that direction.
Appreciate the background on that. I think Council's familiar with all three, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to make sure we knew who you were listing. Councilman Sherwin, if you have some of that name.
I haven't talked to. I'd like to nominate Kim Benson. I think she'd really do good as far as research work and going through the document that would need to be done. Also, I'd like to nominate Toby Hudson. Those are the two names I.
I think we all know both of those are good. I don't think so. Councilman Tibbs, you've got a few names?
I do. I've got four that I've spoken to, just we're basing on availability as well. And had a question, maybe Stephanie, on residency. If they live outside the city, but they have business inside the city, does that qualify or disqualify?
I'm going to look to Brian to tell me if I'm wrong, but that's a Council decision.
But that's a decision you want to make.
Okay.
And that's one of the things actually on this slide. Because I had a similar question from another Council member on selected members.
Okay. Well, I've got Dean Crum, Rodney Hill, Matt Griffith, and then Tim Kettig. All four are business owners, also invested interests into city. I think I've spoken to all four of them. They're all willing. The schedule will be the factor if whether they can or they can't. So we can revisit that.
Did everyone have time to get those names down? Anybody have any questions on those four? Okay. Councilman, thank you. Yes, sir?
I've got three names, so all three of these have experience within government. Different backgrounds, different age groups. My first recommendation is Sandra McCarty. Second recommendation is Audrey Castillo. And then my third, my recommendation is Damian Martinez.
Okay. Give me your second again. Audrey?
Audrey Castillo.
Questions for place one, Council? All good. I brought three names as well. Michael Hanning, local businessman, sat on this Charter review the previous Council. Sharp individual, chaired the LGC for at least four years, been fired. Michael Ford chaired the appointment of the Governor of the State of Texas multiple committees down in Austin. So very, very knowledgeable of all things government. And then Donna Ward. Donna would need to look at the schedule, but did express the willingness to contribute. Definitely been around city business for a long time and a previous City Secretary. So those would be my three. That leaves us with 15. So let's talk about the size of this. What, do you have a recommendation?
I don't. Last time we did it with eight or nine, I probably would go more than 715, just this quick timeline and a lot to get through, but.
I don't want to vote on who we don't allow on. Right? What I would ask is I could, we could make this smaller, knowing we're going to appoint two if we wanted to, to Council. So this would be 17 individuals. Schedules get more complicated the more people you have. Discussion over an hour and a half, two hours can be a little bit lost. It can be a harder one to manage when you get up closer to 20 people. Just the location of being able to find a place where we meet and get everybody in and out and all of that. So we really want to give the committee the best opportunity to have success here so that it comes back very clean and precise and concise to Council. What we could do is we could ask each Council member to select two. And then some only brought two, so your world's a little easier than the rest. Donna, you had four, right?
I was making up the ones that didn't.
Dude, I appreciate that. Just looking out in case I didn't have anyone. If we did two, I would ask staff's recommendation, that's going to give us 12 people on the committee, including our.
Including the Subcommittee.
You think that's small enough?
I think it is.
Okay. I would be, I'd prefer 12. And then we just leave it with each person to narrow it down to two. And then that way, everybody has contributed from Council, and I think we've got a really strong, I'd be comfortable with any of these names serving. And then assuming that somebody does not have the ability, availability, do we want to produce an alternate or just allow the size to get smaller?
I would say utilize alternate.
Okay. So we would just have whoever we recommend, let's say that I put forward Hanning and Ward, and Mrs. Ward wasn't able to do it because of schedule, then I would propose the, my other alternate. If you're good with that.
Yeah.
Council, y'all want to weigh in on that, or are you good with that direction? Any complaints? Okay.
So each person is going to select two?
Okay, got it. Okay, those two. Do you need direction on this now, or would you like for each Council to be able to reach out to you tonight or tomorrow and tell you, hey, these are the two that I've selected?
You can reach out to me after the meeting, let me know. And if, let me know if you have not, I know some of these are willing. If you have not talked to them yet and you need us to reach out to see if they're willing to serve, please let me know, and we have to get in contact.
Okay. More importantly, maybe, is, you know, how we get two individuals here to commit to that additional workload that really want to get into this charter. And so do I have two Council members that would like to volunteer? Okay. Councilman Simpson said he would if nobody else, you know, volunteered. So do we have anybody else that's wanting to do this? Are we okay with the two on the other right side?
We're out of town a couple of weeks.
Okay. So we're good. I'm very comfortable with these 15 names, plus Councilman Simpson, Councilman Sherwin as our Subcommittee on this. And I say we, you know, all systems go.
Perfect. Well, if you get me your list of your two-plus alternates, then we will get that together, and we'll keep Councilmembers Sherwin and Simpson copied into those emails that's to give to the committee and provide dates, the city will basically have to get this one.
Right.
So, quick question for Council, ask for the feedback. May 14th may not be the day to have the next conversation for you, for your priorities. Do you want to do that in a like special work session? Do we want to try to do that on May 23rd and have a conversation? I'm sorry, maybe 28th at that Council meeting? By then, that's one to two days before we're meeting with the.
Do we, do we have any conflicts between, from Council, between the, say, the 20th to the 24th, somewhere in there? That would be your week in between two Council meetings. So not trying to do something next week, but giving ourselves the 14th, if we can work in a regular agenda, we would bring forward our particular Charter recommendations. But then we would give ourselves a work session scheduled, knowing that somewhere between 14th and the 28th, we would schedule a work session. Versus trying to do it.
Versus trying to do it on the 14th. Because we had proposed maybe a possible morning work session on the 14th. I think that's conflicted now. And so we would need to do something either in the regular meeting, if you want to, or outside of that.
Council, what do you guys have those weeks, or what do you guys think about that? Do you want to try to narrow that a bit?
No, I just need to know if you're on, available.
On, tell me again where that is. So if we want to leave the 14th as a possibility, we shoot for that. If that day gets full, then we're looking at somewhere between the 14th and the 28th that we need to schedule a work session. Unless we'd like to go ahead and schedule a work session prior to the 14th. Well, I'm out. The 19th through the 22nd. Okay? Of that time period that you just gave. Anybody else got a conflict?
I could do the week of the six sometime if we wanted to move it up.
Okay. Anybody got any issues, the sixth through the 10th, I guess?
As long as they give a couple of day options.
Okay. Stephanie, what I would like to do is direct you guys to get with Council here today, tomorrow. Let's look at the 7th, 8th, 9th, those three, three days to schedule a work session.
We'll follow up with the email.
7th through the 8th. If we don't get a 7th through the 8th timeframe scheduled for a couple-hour work session on this, then let's get it worked in on the 14th.
Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions I can answer on this?
And then it'll be at that meeting that the Council will discuss any particular topics that are of interest to us, to be considered.
Yeah, definitely one of those topics.
Bring your Charter recommendations and amendments. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's keep, let's move in here. We're on to item 8D. We have a update, a quarterly update from Mr. Carter here on all things ABC.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, Ted.
Well, thanks for letting me be here today. Lots of exciting stuff later on in Council for us. Three new projects for us to talk about later on, but kind of wanted to give you all an update of what's going on so far in the first quarter of this year. We started off early in the year with our annual State of the Economy event. I know most of you all were there that morning. We introduced officially our new reroute, which is our recruiting tool to attract some of our talent that wanted to go to the bigger areas. We wanted those folks to come back and raise their family here because they know how great a place Amarillo was to raise their family. So we've launched that campaign, and we've already got almost 20 names on that list. So very excited about that, and we're going to start sending those boxes out as part of that reroute campaign. Aaron Dimmerson was the speaker that morning. Aaron is the Texas Economic Development Corporation President and CEO, which is the private side of the Governor's Office for Economic Development. He previously served as the Workforce Commissioner representing employers. Did a great job. We got a lot of great press off of that. Aaron did some posts around the state about talking about how great Amarillo was to some colleagues and companies. So very thankful that Aaron came and did that for us and was able to get some press out of that for Amarillo. We had a joint meeting, the AEDC Board and City Council. In that, a couple of things that came out of that joint meeting was to get started on a strategic plan for the AEDC. We, in talking with the mayor and our board and a couple of board members, that we have decided to hire the next move group to conduct that. And so as we get that process started, I know the mayor wants to do another joint meeting to have that strategic plan kickoff, along with some community members to be on that, in that joint meeting to help with that strategic plan. Also, during that meeting, we worked on the incentive guideline revision and approval process. I know our board approved the revisions that we made to the incentive guidelines, and I know Council has made the revisions to the guidelines on the city side. Several BRE visits, those are business retention and expansion visits were conducted this quarter, 18 of those this quarter. We also made a trip to Xcel Energy's corporate headquarters up in Minneapolis. Had a great visit with them. And then this last week, 20, around 20 community leaders, I think it ended up being 17, participated in the Chambers Washington DC days. We had great conversations. I actually got to meet with Senator Corin for a few minutes. We met with Senator Cruz and Representative Jackson while we were there. We also had meetings with Department of Energy and the National Nuclear Science as it relates to the Pantex operations. And then Bell Helicopter hosted us for breakfast in their Washington office. So a great time there. Let me give you a little bit of updates. I know there were some questions over the last few months, asking questions. I know Councilmember Tibbs asked about commitments that AEDC had, and were we able to fulfill those? And I know this sheet is really hard to see, and I'm sorry on the screen. What this talks about, and I will get y'all copies, I hope y'all can see it on your screen better than I can see it. I'm going to have to look at the copy that I have. What this talks about, this is our cumulative project status report. This just talks about the commitments that we have. If every project maxed out, that's it. Every job, when we present a job, present a project to y'all and we say up to 60 jobs, this commitment takes all 60 of those jobs in there. And so right now, AEDC has a total commitment of 146,000, 146 million, 737,000. If you'll look at the next page, this talks about cash flow. I know Donna, or Councilmember Tibbs, excuse me, had asked about cash flow through the years. So we did a cash flow analysis for the next five years. This also is updated to include the debt service for the Northeast Interceptor Program. You can see that down towards the bottom. So over the next five years, right now, we have, if we pay our yearly commitments at the end of '23 and '24, we have about 63 million 900 in assets. At the end of five years, missing, now this does not take into consideration any new projects, but at the end of next, at the next five years, we'll have an increase of $12 million over the next five years in cash flow at the current rate. We have two debt services right now. One of those is going to roll off in '27, the other one rolls off in '31. And then also takes into account if we take debt out for the Albers Aerospace hanger that the Council approved last year. Certainly would try to answer questions from this sheet. I know it's new. I can certainly get you a better copy of that if you would like. But certainly would answer any questions from this. I know it's a lot to take.
Can you kind of, you mentioned, because we have the joint meeting and we talked about kind of looking at, you know, what we offer to potential industries to come in, and we kind of made some adjustments. Can you kind of give a high-level overview of those, what those adjustments were? I guess maybe are reasoning behind while we were changing.
Yeah, absolutely. So we try to look at these every two years. I think it's important to look. I think it's important to look at these every two years and adjust if necessary. Obviously inflation, uh, was one of the key driving factors of why we wanted to change the AEDC portion. We thought the capital investment was too low and so we actually doubled the capital investment in the metrics table and that is, um, I don't have a copy in our, um, version or at least up on the screen. That is in, on page sixteen of the, uh, comprehensive guidelines. The capital investment, um, actually I think we quite, actually quadrupled that amount. It used to be, um, you had to invest half a million dollars now to get a, uh, an incentive. The capital investment has to be over two million on new investment. And so it goes up to eight million and you have to have at least ten full-time jobs. We kept that number, but we also increased the, uh, minimum salary requirement. That number was forty-five thousand, so all new projects that we bring, um, as of, um, when this was signed, if we were already talking to somebody, we left that in, but, um, we have raised that number to fifty thousand instead of forty-five thousand. We thought, um, that there needed to be an increase there. So a little over ten percent increase in, in, um, that number and then the next level added five thousand. So now, instead of forty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five, seventy-five, we added five thousand dollars more to that table. So great question, thank you.
Any new questions? So, um, before you go on, Mr. Carter, I know, I know one of the other guidelines that we've seen as a council that we, we greatly appreciate. And I think it goes to the conversation of, um, Kai, you're, you're economist and why this is a bad deal, you know, at different times of you. You had somebody that was already coming here and they were coming anyway and you gave them ten years of a hundred percent tax on it or more. And one thing that you've done very well, I think, is you, you know, started introducing that tier roll-offs or if somebody does bring a billion dollar asset that they're constructing, that rolls onto our property tax in year two. So it goes, you know, a hundred and ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty. So what we're seeing is a, a realization of those property taxes coming on earlier with a combination and a compromise of the, the incentive, still being able to keep us in, in good competition.
And that's one of the, that's one of the changes that was made on the city's part of that, first twelve pages of the city's, uh, comprehensive guidelines that was changed to, to make that more of a step, is what you're talking about.
Right. And, and I'm, I'm just saying like, I, I guess I'm not separating what the city came up with with what you came up with. You know, both of these pages have been, uh, pretty comprehensive and collaborative.
Absolutely. It has, Andrew Freeman, um, was the, the first author along with Doug Nelson at the AEDC and so we've continued to collaborate on that on. We, we hand that to all of our, um, perspective as one document. I mean, the first twelve pages are what the city can offer and the next, um, thirteen or fourteen pages are what AEDC can offer, but that's a, a comprehensive guideline.
I think the point I'm, I'm just wanting to, you know, associate here a little bit and make more clears, we're making progress. And I know, I know these four guys ask a lot of hard questions and, and say, you know, tell me why, and I think it's important to show on the other side what you guys are doing to, to help. And so if, if you want to jump back in there, I'm good.
No, it's great. So if there's no questions on cash flow, obviously if you have questions later, just holler at me and I'll certainly try to answer those questions for you. And so, uh, just kind of wanted to briefly talk about, um, kind of a workforce, uh, update. I was shocked by this. We got our workforce update numbers. Obviously we struggle with unemployment, but I will tell you, in the last year, um, our civilian labor force has grown over two thousand people, uh, from twenty-three to twenty-four. And then also the employee number is almost up two thousand. So there's two thousand more people employed as of March thirty-first of this year versus March thirty-first of last year. That's, that's an incredible sign for us as we go out and recruit, that that many people, more people have joined the, the workforce. And so, uh, very proud of that number. I, I was actually surprised. I didn't know that it would grow that much, so very, very, uh, excited about the, the prospect of that number. And then this next, uh, slide is, it's incredible when you look at that. And this is a project impact of, of, of some of our larger projects that we've done like, uh, Bell Helicopter, um, Amazon, uh, GRI, which is the tower manufacturer out of Centerport. Pan Am appears, uh, appear, is an example of some of the larger projects that we've done. Uh, and this is from two thousand on, um, just the, uh, impact of those projects, uh, a hundred and forty-seven million dollars, that's what AEDC has invested. Obviously a hundred and twenty million of that is in the belt. But the company has invested four hundred and eight million dollars. That doesn't take into some of our larger ones that we've announced, but they haven't started yet. The payroll impact is about a hundred and forty million dollars per year, uh, those companies. The taxes that they paid, um, is around eleven, uh, point eight million dollars this year. Uh, the taxes they've paid since two thousand, sixty-nine million dollars. The city's portion of that, about one point six million dollars this year, uh, from those projects and, uh, over the lifetime, or for since two thousand, those projects have paid in about nine million dollars in taxes to the city alone. So huge impact, uh, on these projects. Certainly would try to answer any questions on that. I have to thank, uh, Michael Kitten on doing the worksheet on that. Also, uh, the, the, the folks at Pratt. Michael has Pratt on speed dial trying to get this worksheet, uh, worked out. It's certainly a lot more complicated than me putting it on a Word, Word document. And so I, I certainly appreciate Michael's work on this and obviously our partners at Potter Randall appraisal district. Certainly try to answer any questions on that or the workforce on. Just a few, uh, project updates. Producers on Beef, that's our eight hundred and forty million dollar, uh, announced project. Obviously that's located I forty in US two eighty-seven. They have broke ground and doing dirt work and cement work. It's incredible how much dirt's been moved out there. If you get a chance to go by there, we went by there at lunch and, I mean, they are, they are working diligently. We, we anticipate that, about thirty more months on that construction project. Albers Aerospace, uh, very excited. They've acquired two more companies that they want to move to Amarillo. They're currently operating in Tradewinds Airport. Uh, we met with their architect and design company on the hanger that, um, we previously talked about that, uh, that we're gonna construct for them. And then they also, um, are working on a lease, a leased space out at the airport permanently for a long-term lease on one of their manufacturing, um, spaces. So, uh, I appreciate, I know, uh, Mike Connor's in the, in the back from the airport and I appreciate his work, um, working together on, uh, helping Albers get that space secured. Austin Hose, um, their expansion is nearly complete. That, uh, project, um, is on the north side of, uh, our South Georgia Business Park. And so about a fifteen million dollar expansion and they're already wanting to expand again. So they already don't have enough space, so they want to build more space. And so we're really excited about that. Plant Agriculture Systems, that's the hydroponic project that we brought to y'all, I think, back in the fall. Um, that's five hundred million dollar, um, capital investment. They closed on the land and so their clock is ticking on when they have to break ground. That's gonna be in our Centerport East Park, um, so just directly east of the two TBCJ facilities. Um, obviously that was a huge project with us. We got to, uh, collaborate with Lubbock on that because neither one of us had enough acreage, um, for, for one big pro, project. And so we collaborated on that. So, uh, both cities are, uh, going to have facilities. We were recognized at the Governor's Mansion for that, um, for Site Selection Magazine. And so, um, that's always exciting when you get recognition on work that you've done. Uh, business facilities, um, recognized for their Deal of the Year in Agriculture and then Trading Industry Magazine rated that one of the top sixteen deals in the United States this year. And then the, uh, new, uh, Amazon facility, we were out there today. It's unbelievable, they're already working on parking lot for that. We anticipate that'll be opened, uh, that last mile facility will be opened, uh, in the fall and, uh, we anticipate that's gonna be around thirty employees. No incentive given on that one, so those are always fun when you don't have those. So, um, just some recognition, uh, was back at the Governor's Mansion for the Governor's Cup recognition. Uh, we've been invited to that four years in a row. Uh, this was the twelfth year in a row that Texas has won the Governor's Cup and it wasn't even close. I think that we had like seven thousand projects announced in Texas. I think the next biggest, the best state was maybe fourteen or fifteen hundred projects, maybe North Carolina was the second state. So, um, always exciting, um, you know, when you get to sell Texas and then you get to sell Amarillo, it's a great day. Uh, and then we were recognized by the Texas Economic Development, um, Council for Economic Excellence. Seventy-five of the eight hundred and forty, uh, economic development organizations were organized, uh, were, uh, recognized for this. And what that has to do with your financials being audited, um, staff as far as the, um, credentials that they have and the training and then also, um, the board training, um, that you receive as a board member. With that, I'd like to, I know I've got a couple of board members here. Uh, our newest board member's here, Deepak Patel, he's been a great addition. He came on in January, so Deepak, thank you. And then Scott Bentley's in the back. He's our senior member of the, uh, of board. This is his sixth year and, uh, was a two-time chair and so very thankful for them. And then, of course, we couldn't do this without the staff that we have. We have an amazing staff. Uh, there's nine of us, including me. And so we got a couple of members here, Michael Kitten and Paul Simpson here. And so, uh, very, very proud of the staff that we have. And so, um, that's all I have. Certainly would answer any questions that you may have.
Appreciate the presentation, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Great job. Thank you. Look forward to the, uh, the work session together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, we're gonna move to item eight E. I know I'm pushing you a little bit. We're gonna do some quick, uh, updates from council members serving on outside boards and then we'll take a recess. Uh, if we can go ahead and start with, uh, council and craft, uh, you have beautification, public arts and parks and rec, I believe.
Yep. Parks and rec and beautification. So, then we have Mr. Kishiba give the presentation on this and his staff, he'll give us a power point presentation and, uh, we'll see.
Okay. All right. Aaron, council, Michael Kishiba, Director of Parks and Rec. Uh, just giving you a quick update on the two boards and, uh, we're gonna start with park board and then we'll do beautification. So with all of our park board meetings, we always provide updates on what council has recently approved. Uh, that included the standards of care, uh, the master plan for the East Ridge property, uh, the landscape maintenance contract, which will reduce, uh, costs to the department a hundred thousand annually, and also the additional funding for the independent estate plus one. Some of the things that staff is working on, um, at the last council meeting, we're looking at, um, policies and procedures for the park sponsorships and waivers. Um, we updated the park board on some of the staffing challenges we've had at the zoo. Um, we've been working to get those refilled. Uh, we also added a couple of long-horned steers out there. Um, we've also been working on a new work order software that's primarily for park maintenance, so we can put in work orders. It allows us to track that better, uh, see response times, see where we're struggling in terms of different types of projects. Um, one of the other things we've been implementing is customer surveys throughout the department. Uh, we actually are using a metric called net promoter score. Um, basically it's promoters minus the tractors divided by. So, um, those scores have come in very high. So far, we're gonna continue to monitor those and the main goal is to see what citizens are saying and then if there are issues that we can respond a lot quicker. We're in the process of hiring for the summer, so, uh, we actually have a hiring event tonight at the Warford Activity Center. Um, we've had a lot of people apply for cashier positions, but one that we always struggle with is lifeguard. So if you know any, uh, fifteen-year-olds plus that are looking to, uh, for summer drop, send them our way. Again, Warford Activity Center tonight at least starts at six. Uh, and then, um, planning to open, uh, Southwest Pool.
Is that what we decided, move forward Southwest Pool?
Well, we kind of had it on hold and we submitted some information and then, uh, guidance we received from city manager was just keep moving forward. But we'd be happy to revisit that. Um, Many Park, um, that was a, uh, we had a, a section of concrete actually that had eroded and collapsed and so we were able to get out there fairly quickly and replace those panels that had, uh, collapsed. Uh, and you can see on the right side there, that's the nude lighting at the North Lake. So, um, I'll share some other pictures. Currently the contractor's working, working on the South Lake, so they're boring, putting in bases and working on the poles. Thompson Pool Demo, um, is almost done, so that pool structure is, uh, primarily removed. Um, they are starting to backfill. Uh, I believe when they were digging that pool or removing that pool, they actually found three pool shells. So, uh, I think that's part of the reason it lasted eighty-seven years. Construction is about to start on the Knight Street Trail, so we've officially gotten the paperwork and we're gonna issue a notice to proceed. Uh, so that's at the intersection of Wallace and Knight, just north of Many Park where all those mountain bike trails are. Uh, that is primarily funded out of Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant and council proved that in the stack. Uh, these are some pictures of the lights. Again, we've, we've almost completed and a big thank you to Todd State of Hagan with, uh, facilities, he's really run the point on these. Uh, San Houston Park, the lighting is done. San Justin Park, the lighting is done. Um, as I mentioned, Many Park North is done and we're now working on the, uh, south portion of that. You can see it's a huge difference in terms of lighting. Uh, we know that from a public safety standpoint, lighting and improving the lighting in parks is a huge thing for, uh, public safety. Working on camera installation, we've had two installed. We've had two license plate readers installed. There's four more that are scheduled to be, uh, installed as soon as those, uh, are back in stock with that company. So, um, and you can see some of the, the domets and other things that are in those pictures. Concrete repairs, this is another, uh, project that council approved. Um, this allows us to use a contractor to go and start addressing some of those concrete issues that we see throughout the park. Uh, the areas that we started on were obviously San Houston and Many Park. Those are the parks that we see a significant number of either walkers or participants. And so we prioritize those as kind of a higher level of priorities. Um, they are finishing up San Houston as we speak and so tomorrow they should be, uh, moving off of that site. And then they'll be shifting, I believe, to the North Lake of Many Park to start basically following our lighting contractor out of that park. Um, this is a new program that we started. It's called the Yellow of City Green Thumbs and, um, it was hosted by our beautification, uh, department. And, uh, so the first one was a composting class, the second one was community garden, and the third one, which is coming up, uh, May second, is on rainwater harvesting. Uh, very well attended, very good response from the community on that. We are bringing back our park guide. We haven't had a printed park guide in quite a few years and so we're bringing that back and we're also gonna have that available online. That'll allow people to go on and see all the different programs that the department is offering over the course of the summer and going into the fall. Park maintenance is in the process of getting splash pads ready. Elwood Park, uh, that park has struggled with irrigation. It was actually part of the old hydraulic irrigation system. That has all been removed and modern irrigation system has been put in on, I guess it'd be the west side of the park. Uh, and so we're working to get that irrigation and landscape restored. So that's on the park board side. And then on the beautification side, wanted to share, this is the first mural that has been approved or completed for the year. Uh, this is at thirty-three fourteen Olson. Uh, it's the first one, as I said, to be done. Um, this facility actually received some significant damage due to the flooding last year. The board approved six to be done, so this is the first of six. Um, and then in terms of cleanup effort, uh, starting in twenty twenty-four, um, we've really started to focus more on community cleanups. Uh, we've had forty-five volunteers clean up Many Park, Sub East and Martin Road. We've collected over thirty-two bags of trash. Um, we're actually getting ready to host another big cleanup event this weekend, um, with anticipation of about sixty volunteers. So again, we continue to try to do more of those cleanup efforts. Again, also have that birthday event this Friday at two o'clock where we plant some trees. So, um, that's just a quick update on parks and beautification. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council?
Did we wind up losing any trees in, in Elwood or, or, because I know we had an issue about that for a while.
There was a lot of dead trees that were removed. And so that's one of the efforts is as we start to remove some of those trees, going in and planting some new trees, but a lot of those trees have been dead and were really a hazard.
Mr. Kishiba, thank you. Appreciate the work you're doing. Uh, moving on, item three, uh, MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, is council chairman.
Travis, do you wanna come up? Are you here?
Do we have Mr. Bumio here?
I don't see him. I gotta teach you.
Looks like, looks like you're up.
We got a meeting, which is, uh, April eighteenth. The Policy Committee approved the process to oversee the letting of projects funded from surface transportation block grants, funds and transportation alternatives. surface transportation block grants, funds, and transportation alternative funds. The committee approved the priority list for the projects submitted for the funds just mentioned. The committee approved the revision to the year 2024 Unified Planning Work Program. This revision will add an additional planner position to the MPO staff. They also adopted a short-range planning document, the Transportation Improvement Program for years twenty-five through twenty-eight. The committee received an update on development of the next long-range plan, which is from 2025 to 2050 Metropolitan Planification Plan. The Unified Planning Work Program for year 2025. Last, they received an update on projects currently under construction. Anybody have any questions?
Nope, I think we're good. Appreciate you giving that one. I'm going to jump on LGC real quick, and then we're going to take a recess. Local Government Corporation. We did go ahead and nominate a new chair. We had Michael Hanning step up on that. Alfonso Zambrano was nominated, and then I believe Megan Zanetti was the vice president of that one. And so we've got everybody in the position that we need over there. We went ahead and got a few updates. We did the SOC twiddles update. They're underway. Hadn't caught a game over there, please do. Got some pretty weather coming. And then I think basically the big issue was the LGC's retail building that's over there, built inside of the parking garage. Lono is the developer that is purchasing that. They've secured all the funding that they needed. They committed to closing on that in June. They had a little bit of an auction period that I believe, I know Mr. Freeman could correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to say May sixteenth or something like that. May eleventh is what Mr. Skank has reminded me of. So here shortly, that, that auction period will expire, and we're, we're ready to close that. So that is roughly twenty-five thousand square feet of space there. It's already been, you know, I guess, it's been changed into a condominium regime. That, that's a bad term, because it doesn't mean condos like you think residential. It just means you have commercial property that's now able to be parceled up so that we can sell those individually. The goal is to continue to sell those. Lono will continue to sell and lease those downtown. We need people that want to be downtown and want to own a piece of Amarillo right there or put businesses in. The purpose of that investment back in 2015 was to create activity and to bring additional businesses down here that produce sales taxes and pay property taxes. And so we've sold that. We think we'll close that shortly, and I think that was the positive out of that meeting. We're ready to see that guy go ahead and continue on. And then LGC is set up and ready to make sure that we're moving forward with everything else that we need to for the parking garage. There was a few other parking arrangements and commitments that were discussed, but overall, we had a pretty productive meeting. Any questions on LGC agenda? Okay. At this time, it is almost five. Let's take a ten-minute recess. We'll come back in here, and we'll do consent, non-consent.
How are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Yeah, you doing okay?
Yeah.
Got y'all. Which is always good to see. Yeah. There you go. Right? So people, people have a present. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just telling you.
I haven't been around.
No. Yeah. Definitely.
I haven't been around.
Can't be all stuff.
I have problems.
Something you didn't understand.
I've been there, and I'm, too.
I thought you were.
Sorry, I disrespected you. I did that once before, and I got Jared calling that today. So, no, no, but I can do it then, because I was like, oh my God, I ain't doing that. So, no, I don't. No, I don't. Oh, no. I heard this one. Oh, yeah. Sorry, Howard. You know? So anyway.
I'm just going to sit.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
I like your requests to the, I just, I'm not sure.
Are you retired by now?
You know, there are days.
I'm talking to myself.
There are days. Wouldn't that be better? I think I'd do it. How about yourself?
Yeah, I've got my...
I'm thinking January 26th if I go.
You won't be aiming that at Councilman. It's for your sense of excitement.
Some of these people told me when I retire, I'm gonna just come to this. No, I'm not. I promise you that is not on my list to come to this one.
I swear I heard my name somewhere.
I'll go fishing, I'll go with Greg King.
How are you?
I'm good.
How are you?
That's why I have time.
That's why I have time.
Are y'all gonna stay?
We're going back there for 10 or 15 before I come back out from here. If that's okay. I just wanted to tell you, is that okay? Sorry. Okay, good. I know Paige is gonna talk to me, but I told her that I was gonna, we were gonna go back there first.
And I don't have an update for you because he called me back.
I thought you got to go listen what y'all know. What even in there?
He hasn't done yet.
I know.
But he came by the office as soon as I left. Hi, I've got my presentation ready just in case.
I just like, oh my God, I've seen him twice since I sent him that.
As soon as the drone gets ready.
Ready to go.
I did bring Jake in.
I know.
Charge the ground.
Okay, I'd like everybody to head back to their suit and go ahead and get called back in here in a minute.
All right, we're gonna call ourselves back to work here and I know we had a couple of comments that were talking about a few items on consent. I'd ask if any council member wanted to pull anything off of the consent agenda for further discussion.
Mayor, I would like to pull M, N, and O and that project off for discussion and conversation.
I'd ask staff if we think we're fine to pull all three of those, discuss all three of those simultaneously since they relate and then we could go ahead and vote on everything except those and then, or actually, you know what, let's just do a discussion and let's see if that's good enough and then we vote for prior to that. So maybe we don't pull M, N, and O and vote individually.
Mr. Freeman, would you mind watching us do that? I think you're the most qualified to educate us on the job.
Happy to do that. So this is tiers number three, so we actually have three taxing and reinvestment zones. Really the purpose, it's allowed by state law as an economic development tool to encourage reinvestment or new investment in a particular geographic area. So typically you hear about them in downtown, so which we have one here, it's those where you're seeing depressed property values, declining property values, and you take an opportunity to create a zone, grow those values and reinvest in the area. So the way it works is you establish a baseline here, in the case of tiers number three, that's 2022, that locks it in at that property tax value. Anything in that base here continues to create paid taxes to the participating entities. So you've got the city of Amarillo participating, Amarillo College in Rango County. So it's not just the city taxes involved as far as property tax goes, it's three different entities. So that's another benefit of having a zone is multiple partners can pitch in for the good of that area. So you've got your base here, 2022 locked in, keep making revenue for the tax entities. Moving forward throughout the years of the zone, any new investment or any growth of those existing values gets captured for the zone. So in the next year, if there's a new 10 million in value, the taxes are collected, each entity, the three entities pull those together, it gets put into a fund that can only be spent on that zone within that boundary. So anything in the downtown zone can only go to downtown projects, east gateway can only go to east gateway projects, and south gateway can only go to south gateway projects. So that's a little background on the tiers. This zone in particular, it's a 20-year zone to collect that new increment, new base to help pay for the projects within that zone. It's a little different than our previous zones as well that we are not dedicating 100% of our taxes for 20 years. For that first 10 years, it'll be 100%, and the last 20, the last 10 years will be half of that. So starting in year 11, if nothing changes in the way the zone's set up, each entity will start to collect half of that tax base. So we'll see, kinda like we've been talking about with the tax abatements, with the step-down approach. Instead of waiting 30 years, 20 years to start seeing any activity and new revenue, this will take 11 years. So that's a real benefit to the taxing entities to encourage that growth quickly and see in year 11 some of those benefits. The way tiers number three was set up and why these projects are on the agenda, it was really set up to invest in the infrastructure. The way it works is the city tiers, all the taxes involved do not get paid except on reimbursement basis. So each of the agreements you see here are going to be investing their dollars, whether it's A, B, C dollars or Rockrose investing in the roads and utilities, they will front all those dollars. So we've got about 15 million planned in investment that'll take place over the next few years, and then they will not be paid back until we start seeing new tax base growth. So they are investing on the front end and it might take the entire 20 years before they get their full payback. We're hopeful that that is a very conservative estimate and those 15 million in revenue, we hope it's 20-plus million. The sooner we can get that infrastructure in the ground, the sooner it attracts new development, new sales tax, new property tax, and start paying those in incremental dollars. And then each year, we'll evaluate the revenue coming in, evaluate the projects completed, and issue the rebate checks based on that. So I'm happy to answer questions about tiers in general. One question we had was about Sundab not being in the city limits. That is correct. The taxing and reinvestment zone can be outlined in the ETJ as well, which this is, and we are currently working with the property owners to annex that as we go through this process. So they will be annexed and participating in that sense as well. Any questions?
When I called you, I think yesterday, Andrew, you said something about 10-year individual yield?
Yes, so that's the 10-year that we're paying the 100% of our new revenue as the city will go into the zone, starting year 11, half of it comes back. So we'll start to see some benefits much earlier on in other tiers zones. So year 11, half of it will start coming back. Into the general fund, be able to use on police, fire, streets, any of those needs.
Another question. And so just to be clear on the tier zone, what can qualify and not qualify to be covered for this? So it has to be something that's for the public use?
Not necessarily. So as far as the infrastructure goes, we do have, so we have two on the agenda, the public infrastructure, and then we have a general developers agreement that's supporting a project, and that's the Kids Inc parking lot. So they're investing in a project that's gonna spur development in the zone while the others are the public infrastructure. So if you're supporting a project that's gonna help bring new revenue into the zone, that qualifies as well as a project.
But again, the parking lot would be a public benefit, I guess it's like the parking garage would be a...
Right, yeah, it serves a good purpose for the zone as far as parking and attendance in the zone.
And I guess what happens though, I guess with what's going on with Kids Inc, they're making headway to get that project done.
They are.
But they can have the project, but if they don't have the streets and the infrastructure to do it, it's just gonna take that much longer to get it to accomplish.
Correct, yes, so it is important to have all these three together, that they'll actually feed and kinda start building at the same time. I think Kids Inc will move a little bit sooner and they'll probably only have maybe one or two access points until the roads are completed, but we're hoping with these approvals that we'll see that investment move as quick as possible.
And then just to make sure, so it's like each of these has a certain reimbursement up to, so...
Yes.
So ideal scenario, we don't have to reimburse it. Tell me, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what this reimbursement means again.
So the reimbursement means they're gonna put the investment in the ground, so for example, ADCs is a little over 7 million. They will put forward the investment, we will track that, they'll turn in receipts, documentation that's been completed, we'll have that on hand, and then each year as new revenue comes in, we will only pay when revenue comes in. So if we get 200,000 in year one and they complete a project, we'll give them a check of the 90%. So we're gonna hold back 10% till the very end of the zone, pay 90%, so they get a percentage of that year, and then next year we'll reevaluate. Each year as we continue to grow property values, we'll have multiple projects, so how we ended up structuring it, knowing that we have three different projects taking place at the same time, we're gonna evaluate on a yearly basis. Say we had 2 million in one project, 2 million in the other, we're gonna split that 50/50. So if we have 200,000, one will get 100,000 paid back, the other gets 100,000 paid back. So instead of them having to get in line, they'll share the revenue each year based on pro-rata split of their investment.
So when you talk, so we're using money that the ADC has to pay for the projects?
Yes.
And then the tiers, the increment that's generated is what's gonna pay tiers, I mean, pay ADC back the money?
Correct.
So theoretically, ADC's not out the money, they're gonna get it back over a period of time.
Right, they're just investing.
But they're also gonna give the benefit of an additional sales tax, you know, that they're gonna be generating.
Yes, they'll continue to collect their hassle sales tax for any qualifying entity that ends up developing that area, so they'll get paid back basically both ways, because they are losing money, they could have an investment account, they're gonna probably make up more than enough on the sales tax side. But the benefit here is the city's not the one who's footing the whole bill of reimbursement, it's partnership in Amarillo College, Rango County, so that, much quicker as far as getting that rebate back to those companies.
Thank you. Questions?
Appreciate it. So Andrew, one of the benefits of approving this is it allows Kids Inc to move forward a little bit quicker, right, right into the infrastructure, provides those things, which Kids Inc gives a huge benefit to our community and a huge tax, a huge benefit to our community. So it's an investment in actually our community.
It is, that getting that partnership with Rockrose, putting in line to put that 3 million of that parking lot's gonna help close the gap and then you're gonna pull the trigger to start moving dirt and starting on that project.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Any other questions from councilmen? I think sometimes we get into like tier zone, something where you get far enough down the road, you forget maybe what was placed in front of you originally. So the original ask was, hey, if we put in a $50 million top-of-the-line sports complex, we can stop traveling all over the state everywhere else, we would attract people here, people would be coming here, our kids can stay home, we need this. You know, Parks and Rec is now making really good headway, but you know, we still can't take care of all of the youth sports. And so I think it's easy to forget when you're looking at this, like, well, why would we create this and let these people that are coming here, you know, not contribute to the general fund that we need for police and fire, you know, and other needs that we have all over the city? Well, they weren't coming here, they were asking for us to pay for it. So I mean, I think it was pay for this road, pay for this infrastructure, get underneath Hollywood, figure out a way, city, to, you know, get a $50 million complex here and you'll see the benefit. And we looked, what's the city, Elk City, Oklahoma? Looking at that, you know, what, five-year payout, maybe something ridiculous. And so from the investment side, I think as a councilman and as a mayor, I look at it and I say, I'd love to, I have the money. So it becomes a developer issue of like, you may have the money. Well, you put the money in and then gift the property over to the city? No, I can't do that as a developer. Now, is there an arrangement where, you know, developer can put the seed money in and then the city can contribute in a few other ways and we see this realized and then we all benefit for it? I think that's what I wanna go back to and just kinda summarizing, this is how we get here. We don't get here by saying, hey, you know what, we need another tier zone, let's just do tiers three and let's just hope that over a thousand acres of somebody's land, that lots of stuff just lands there, and if we make it super easy on them to get some of their money back on the front end, then hopefully it'll grow. It's not quite like that. And so I think you've got a really good solid business plan, it gets in the rearview mirror over a year and a half, two, three years of fundraising that goes by pretty quick. How long we been working on this? It's not quite three years. Tiers three or Kids Inc? Kids Inc is how old? Three?
It's about a few years.
Two and a half, three.
Probably longer than that coming up, but as far as fundraising, it's about three years.
And then everything else that comes along with that, you know, so I know Topgolf hasn't committed to come here yet, they don't even know they're coming here yet, but Topgolf is coming here. So if we say their name Topgolf a few more times, I think maybe they don't remember. So I just wanna recap on that, and then let me ask a question. Is there an ability to give an abatement inside of this tier zone?
So the other tier zones like we have in tiers two and tiers one do have those rebates, they're not abatements, because they do pay the taxes and we come with a check a few months later. This zone, we really won't encourage that, because if we have one of those in place, it's just gonna take away, we can refund the infrastructure. So by putting these in place, we're basically sending a message that this is the incentive. Paying for that infrastructure is a big part of why we haven't seen a development in that area, so hopefully that is enough to get them to develop.
And I know you never wanna totally tie your hands where you just can't move forward with the deal, but it's gonna be scrutinized and I want our taxpayer to hear, we have a good business plan, it's solid, and it's not a giveaway to the farm, you know, we're gonna put all this in and then, you know, abatement after abatement, and 20 years from now, maybe somebody will start paying taxes. This is strategic, so I think it's important that we keep all that in front of us as we move forward. Do I have other questions for Mr. Freeman?
Do you remember the breakdown on sales tax money that we get, the percentage that comes locally, the percentage that comes from out of town? Is it 60/40 or...
It's a little over 60 that we think comes from out of town.
So the majority of our sales tax money is coming from people that come from other areas, so if you look at what ADC is trying to do, I mean, this investment, and the other thing is, this infrastructure ultimately is being paid by the people who are benefiting directly from the infrastructure. In other words, the other taxpayers are not paying for this infrastructure, because it's coming back as their property tax grows in increment. And then our sales tax, which is, you know, one of our top revenue sources, now bringing more people in, where we're getting 60% of that, you know, that money is coming in, just allows us to continue to do that and grow. I mean, I really like how we use these different tools and structures to be able to help us not only do something good for the community, but hopefully provide an economic engine out there that will continue to help fund different parts of our government in addition to recruitment and infrastructure, so appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you, deputy. Yes, sir, appreciate it. If I could, I'm gonna go back real quick before we ask for a motion. I skipped over item 8F, which is request future agenda items. Do I have any other agenda items from council? No? Okay, so back to the consent agenda, I asked if you wanted to pull anything off for further discussion. We did not take a motion for voting on them separately. Is council comfortable with leaving all those in, voting the consent agenda through as presented? Would ask for a motion?
We've adopted the consent agenda and presented.
Second. Motion in the second, any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. We will move forward to our non-consent agenda. Appreciate everyone that was here for those items. Item 9A. Nope, apologize. Okay, item 10A, Mr. Carter, you're backed up, if you don't mind coming forward for a second reading.
Mayor, council, this is the second reading of the reinvestment zone number 24. A reinvestment zone is created as a step to, for the taxing entity to be able to offer a tax abatement at a later date, which is today, we're gonna talk about that. This is the second reading of this, it's just a step, you can see the reinvestment zone number 24 that we're talking about, this is in our South Georgia business park, this is gonna house a manufacturing and distribution facility, you can see this delineated by 12 and 8 acres, but it's 20 acres total, we're gonna talk about that delineation in just a few minutes in another item, but it's 20 acres is what the zone is, there's a little bit of kinda that whole South Georgia, there's a legal description of that 20 acres. What this does is it allows you to consider a tax abatement with that 20 acres and that delineated into 12 and 8. Let's just say that, we're gonna talk about Sage Olback and their abatement here in just a minute, let's just say they took 12 acres and did not get the other 8 acres, but we voted in the whole 20 acres, so if Sage only took the 12 acres and then at a later day, somebody else took that 8 acre, they all voted in on the tax abatement, whatever you vote in today on that tax abatement, you're voting it in on the zone. So if another company came in that 8 acres, they're gonna get exactly what you offer to Sage. We hope that Sage takes that whole 20 acres, they expand like they're supposed to, but I know that there was a question last time and I apologize for not being here at the first reading, so I would certainly answer any questions about a reinvestment zone, but it's just a tool to offer an abatement. All you're doing is setting up that reinvestment zone, you have to do that every five years. And so on each zone, even though you can offer an abatement for 10 years, I never have understood, you have to re-up that zone every five years, so.
Questions for Mr. Carter, gentlemen?
They wouldn't get anything more than Sage could be getting, right?
That's correct.
Somebody else, I mean, they would get exactly.
You don't even have the ability to change that.
Okay, I think we had a pretty good deal set up with Sage, I just didn't want anybody coming in and being able to get a better deal.
Yeah, and just to go ahead and kinda jump into the other item, just to answer some questions, the reason why that we're gonna ask for an abatement, I know that council has given us direction that if we convey land, we don't wanna do an abatement as well. And so Sage opted to take the land conveyance, but what we found out when we went to do the legal work is that the city has to set up the reinvestment zone. So the city has to offer some type of abatement for the other taxing entities, and I know that Rango County and Amarillo College are interested in giving tax abatement to Sage Olback, the city has to set up the reinvestment zone and has to offer some type of participation agreement. So that's why we're gonna ask for a one-year 10% tax abatement in the next item, or in our next item. So just a little bit of clarification as to why we're asking for this.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Okay, Kevin, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 10A, if I don't have any other questions, I would ask for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 8130 as presented in the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second on item 10A, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Item passes with a 4-1 vote. Okay, moving along to item 10B. This is a public hearing, we have Brady Kinder heading up here. And then our sales tax, which is, you know, one of our top revenue sources, now bringing more people in where we're getting 60% of that, you know, that money is coming in, just allows us to continue to do that and grow. So I mean, I really like how we use these different tools and structures to be able to help us not only do something good for the community, but hopefully provide an economic engine out there that will continue to help fund different parts of our government in addition to recruitment and infrastructure. So appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Deputy. Yes, sir. Appreciate it. If I could, I'm going to go back real quick before we ask for a motion. I skipped over item 8F, which is request future agenda items. Do I have any other agenda items from council? No? Okay. So back to the consent agenda. I asked if you wanted to pull anything off for further discussion. We did not take a motion for voting on them separately. Is council comfortable with leaving all those in, voting the consent agenda through as presented? Would ask for a motion?
We've adopted the consent agenda and presented.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move forward to our non-consent agenda. Appreciate everyone that was here for those items. Item five, item nine A. Nope. Apologize. I know. Let's get ready. Man, who prides these agendas there? So, okay, item 10A. Mr. Carter, you're backed up. If you don't mind coming forward for a second reading.
Mayor, council, this is the second reading of the reinvestment zone number 24. A reinvestment zone is created as a step to, for the taxing entity to be able to offer a tax abatement at a later date, which is today. We're going to talk about that. This is the second reading of this. It's just a step. You can see the reinvestment zone number 24 that we're talking about. This is in our South Georgia Business Park. This is going to house a manufacturing and distribution facility. You can see this delineated by 12 and eight acres, but it's 20 acres total. We're going to talk about that delineation in just a few minutes in another item, but it's 20 acres is what the zone is. There's a little bit of kind of that whole South Georgia. There's a legal description of that 20 acres. What this does is it allows you to consider a tax abatement with that 20 acres and that delineated into 12 and 8. Let's just say that, we're going to talk about Sage Olback and their abatement here in just a minute. Let's just say they took 12 acres and did not get the other eight acres. But we voted in the whole 20 acres. So if Sage only took the 12 acres and then at a later date, somebody else took that eight acre, they all voted in on the tax abatement. Whatever you vote in today on that tax abatement, you're voting it in on the zone. So if another company came in that eight acres, they're going to get exactly what you offer to Sage. We hope that Sage takes that whole 20 acres. They expand like they're supposed to. But I know that there was a question last time and I apologize for not being here at the first reading. So I would certainly answer any questions about a reinvestment zone, but it's just a tool to offer an abatement. All you're doing is setting up that reinvestment zone. You have to do that every five years. And so on each zone, even though you can offer an abatement for 10 years, I never have understood, you have to re-up that zone every five years.
Questions for Mr. Carter, gentlemen?
They wouldn't get anything more than Sage could be getting, right?
That's correct.
Somebody else, I mean, they would get exactly.
You don't even have the ability to change that.
Okay. I think we had a pretty good deal set up with Sage. I just didn't want anybody coming in and being able to get a better deal.
Yeah, and just to go ahead and kind of jump into the other item, just to answer some questions. The reason why that we're going to ask for an abatement, I know that council has given us direction that if we convey land, we don't want to do an abatement as well. And so Sage opted to take the land conveyance, but what we found out when we went to do the legal work is that the city has to set up the reinvestment zone. So the city has to offer some type of abatement for the other taxing entities. And I know that Randall County and Amarillo College are interested in giving tax abatement to Sage Olback. The city has to set up the reinvestment zone and has to offer some type of participation agreement. So that's why we're going to ask for a one-year 10% tax abatement in the next item, or in our next item. So just a little bit of clarification as to why we're asking for this.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Okay. Kevin, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 10A, if I don't have any other questions, I would ask for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 8130 as presented in the agenda.
Second. Have a motion and a second on item 10A. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item passes with a 4-1 vote. Okay, moving along to item 10B. This is a public hearing. We have Brady Kendrick heading up here to walk us into this.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is a public hearing and first reading to consider the rezoning of block three, block one, Colony's Number 54. The change from planned development district 238 to planned development district 238E to construct a 71-unit, three-story apartment complex in the vicinity of Culture Street and Tuscany Parkway. And the applicant is Geospatial Data Inc. for Tuscany Parkway Apartments LLC. The planning and zoning commission found this request would conform with the future land use and have a neighborhood unit concept of development. The original planned development for this area, 238, was originally from the low site to the north and also did include this area along Tuscany Parkway that the applicant's property is a part of. And have PD stated that all sites prior to development phase two had to go through this process to ensure compatibility with surrounding development as at that time, this was all originally established, the Colony's neighborhood was just under development. So there were concerns back then about compatibility with homes that they developed in that area. PD 238 generally follows the GR zoning district standards for allowed uses and development standards. One exception to note is that the PD did allow architectural features of lows to be up to 46 feet high. The planning and zoning commission noted also that the applicant's tract is not immediately adjacent to many single-family homes in the area, nor does its shared direct line site into single-family development. Given that plus the increased setbacks observed along the property lines, with the closest being 86 feet, the commission felt that the three-story height with the peak roof height of 48 feet was appropriate. The PD will also enforce all typical development standards such as landscape, community density, and parking. And there's also a special provision for signs that they will not be allowed on the west or south faces of the building since that's the direction that their single-family home is located. We did send public notices and no comments have been received as of this meeting. And the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval with a unanimous 7 to 0 vote.
Mr. Kendrick, we appreciate that presentation. Any questions for Brady before he steps down? This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing, ask if I have anybody here that would like to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and I'd ask for a motion.
I move to adopt.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item 10B? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Moving along to item 10C, that is Mr. Carter backed up on the previously mentioned project.
Yeah, I sent this in PD. I'm sorry, Stephanie. Mayor, council, this is an item to consider a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Sage Olback. Before I get started, I do want to introduce the owners of Sage Olback. Mr. Gary Sage and Aaron Sage are in the back here, so appreciate you guys coming today and wanting to reinvest in your community. They've been a long time members of our community and business community. And so this is a pretty exciting project. I'm going to go over kind of the economic impact on this and then we'll, I know we've got two items with Sage. Their company profile, they started the bid in 1990s and then Mr. Sage wanted to expand, was one of the original winners of the enterprise challenge, and it's just taken off from there. They do mobile oil reclamation, have done it in, out in the field in farming operations, and they took that to the wind. And now wants to expand that business into where they do mobile oil changes with trucks. They're building full-service truck beds, loop truck beds. The opportunity today, they're going to, they're wanting to expand their business. They're currently located on Lakeside, wanting to expand that business to our South Georgia Business Park would be for them to get invade 12 acres of land in the first phase and eight acres of land in the second phase on a $10 million estimated improvements. And then they would create 60 additional new jobs in that projection. And how that land would work, you know, I talked about phase one and phase two. Phase one, we would convey that land and then once they've expended $8 million and created 30 additional jobs, then they would have the second phase or the eight acres would be conveyed to them after they've created those 30 jobs and expended at least $8 million, not including credit. So it has to be in the building. Probably not going to click because it's in the app. We believe that the project is going to, and they're going to expand over $12 million in this project. And so in the next item, we're going to be requesting tax abatement. Some of the economic activity or output is going to be, if you'll do it the next slide, Stephanie. Oh gosh, I can't read that. So I should have made a note of that. So over the next 20 years, the economic activity of their total operation is going to be about $122 million. So about a $12 million economic input, output every year. That's including what they're doing and then the expansion as well. So a huge economic impact that they have. Our board voted on this yesterday with a 4-0 vote. Scott Bentley abstained from that because he has a banking relationship with that. And so the total value of the incentive that ADC is offering is $600,000 for job creation and then the 20 acres that on paper is valued at 1.1 million. We don't have that much invested in from ADC's standpoint. I also want to point out, before you vote on this, how we make sure that a company performs. I was supposed to tell you all that in my report, that it's reporting period for us. Every company has to report by February 28th. So one of the citizens asked me that during the break and then Michael Kitten got on to me because I was supposed to talk about that. So I just want to make sure that you know that when we do an incentive agreement, a company has to do a performance review every year. They submit their four quarterly reports that they have, their Texas Workforce Commission quarterly reports. They have to present those to us. Doug Nelson, who is our senior vice president for our financial side, reviews that and then Michael Kitten, our vice president of development, reviews that separately. Then they get together to make sure that the review is the same. If they're not, then they re-audit that. Just want to make sure that we, that the taxpayer knows that we are protecting their interest because we, most of these deals we pay at the end. So as Sage performs, they present a report and then we issue a check as they've created those jobs. So what we're asking for y'all is to approve the job location incentive. I will say there are three changes from the agreement that you got that's in the packet. There actually are changes, there are blanks that got filled in. One of those is the effective date. That would be the 23rd of April if you so approve this today. And then the FTE floor, that's on the second page of the document. They currently have 73 FTEs, so that will go in the document. And then their current payroll is $3,396,496 in payroll. So that would fill in those three blanks that are not in the agreement.
I certainly answer any questions. Do you have questions for Mr. Carter?
So you have a projection of 60 new FTEs?
That's correct, yes, sir. At an average salary of a little over $50,000.
Almost doubling the current.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Over the next?
10 years?
I think it's, I think we're projecting that over the next three years, or next five years.
Five years. I like it. Okay, item 10C has been presented. No questions for Mr. Carter, gentlemen? Do I have anyone with a motion?
I move to adopt item 10C as presented in the agenda.
Second. Have a motion and a second on item 10C. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Thank you. Yes, sir. Appreciate you. On to item 10D, sir.
Okay, this is to consider approval of a tax abatement agreement between the City of Amarillo and Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Sage Olback. Obviously, we've talked about what Sage is going to do. They're going to put at least $10 million in estimated improvements in equipment, increase their payroll from 73 up to, we hope, 133, 60 new employees. We, ADC offered, has offered an incentive of $10,000 for each job over five years and then incentive of 20 acres to be conveyed once they meet certain requirements. The ADC is asking the council to approve a one-year 10% tax abatement. This would allow Sage Olback to participate with other taxing entities in tax abatement agreements with those other taxing entities. The city has to take the lead on this because it is in the city limits. So ADC is asking, on Sage's behalf, to the one-year 10% abatement agreement. Based on current figures, we believe with a $10 million value, the city tax would be about $400,000 over a 10-year period. So that 10% would be a savings to Sage of somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000 is what we anticipate the savings that Sage would realize from this one-year 10%. So $396,000 would be the taxes paid by Sage to the city over the next 10 years.
Mr. Carter, we appreciate the math problem on that one. Do I have further questions on this for Mr. Carter? Okay, I would ask for a motion on item 10B.
I'll make a motion as we accept item 10D as stated on the agenda package.
Second. Have a motion and a second from the other right side. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item passes with a 4-1 vote. Councilmember Democrats, you don't have to justify your vote, but if you would like to say something, you definitely can.
I was talking about, but, no, I mean, just where I'm at on the side of the fence anyways is with property tax abatements, just that's the side of the fence I'm on. I encourage you, those business, looking forward to doing business with y'all, but I'm a man of principle and that's where I stand, so nothing personal.
I have found myself on the side of the no vote a time or two, and so sometimes you do feel compelled to maintain your vote based on principle of what you arrived at. So we respect that. Not always the easiest thing to do, but we also feel like this is a great investment. So appreciate you guys being here today. One final item, I believe. Mr. Carter, you're up on item 10B.
Mayor, council, before I get started, this is to consider approval between a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Asset Protection Unit LLC. I have Joe Witzel with me with Asset Protection. We appreciate Joe being here today. This is another business retention and expansion project. Paul Simpson's been busy and so we appreciate what Paul's done in the BRE realm. And so Asset Protection Unit is looking to expand their business. Their company profile, they are the leading provider of data mining and overpayment recovery for insurance. So they've been here a long time in Amarillo. ADC has done a previous expansion deal with them in 2018. They feel, they fulfill all the requirements of that former location incentive agreement and want to expand their business again. And so what we're proposing here today is to look at a location incentive agreement for 30, up to 30 additional new employees at an incentive of $10,000 per job, paid out over five years, which would be a maximum incentive of up to $300,000. They would, would, that would put an additional $1.35 million into additional payroll. They currently have?
72.
72 employees currently here in Amarillo. And so ADC staff is recommending the approval of the incentive agreement. Our board voted yesterday on a 4-0 vote. Andrew Hall had to abstain from discussion and vote because he is, their company is the landlord. So it was a 4-0 vote.
Certainly would answer any questions. Questions on item 10E? Hearing no questions, would ask for a motion on our last item.
I move to approve item 10E.
Second. Have a motion and a second on item 10E. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes with a 5-0 vote. We are not going to, we recess. Thank you, Mr. Carter.